All right, welcome everybody. I'm going to open up tonight's Board of Trustees meeting for June 10, 2025. Everyone please stand and join me for the inaugural meetings.
I believe this is the plan that I have in America. I consider it competent for the same organization under that individual delivery assistance for all.
Thank you. All right, so let's get right into it. Approval of minutes, both first to be approval of minutes on April 15th. I think we had previously approved them, but then there was some changes from the plan. So someone might have motion to approve, re-approve the minutes on April 15th. So all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And now the minutes from May 13, 2025. So roll the paper.
Aye.
Okay, approval of warrants, warrants.
We have moved to be approved warrant number 051425 in the amount of $69,196.54. And warrant number 061025 in the amount of $470,502.65. The grand total of $539,789.89. The great bulk of this is $307,000 worth of labor.
I'll say. Roll the paper.
Aye.
Was one of these for this previous question?
Um, for the housing.
Okay.
So the first one, the $69,000 is going to be the budget and then the big one.
Yeah.
Is for the new new year without having a longer tax.
Yes. Okay. Department reports, Chief Hurley, you?
Let me start.
Oh, I'll go over there. Uh, Tommy?
Okay, I'll go. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm just going to review some numbers from May and I'm going to give you the fiscal year totals for all stuff we collect. So for the month of May, we collected 64.62 tons of garbage. Our ball collection was 6.82 tons and our brush collected was 6.48 tons. And recycling for the month of May was 21.94 tons. Uh, for the fiscal year, fiscal year in 2025, uh, garbage, we collected 691.27 tons. Uh, ball, we collected four, uh, 64.47 tons. Uh, our street sminking soils, it was 44.71 tons. Rush, we collected 52.46 tons. Our leaves, that's, um, bag leaves was, uh, 11.11 tons. Our metal collection, uh, collection agents recycle also gets, uh, that's 11.25 tons. And our yard waste bag was nine tons. We also picked up 109.68 tons of loose leaves, that's what our vacuum. And the total recycling for the village for the fiscal year was 221.34 tons.
Do you ever have to compare the last year's recycling?
Yeah. So it was up 7.5% compared to last year.
Well, it's good.
Recycling.
Yeah. We get money for recycling.
We get money for that, yeah.
That's good, we get every day. Uh, besides the, um, I don't know if you had a chance to do that, or if anything?
Transition, we had to order more valves, correct? So we ordered two valves to match.
Okay.
Um, W and Friday.
Also, I'm not sure that the law is working. I don't think that there's even any power to it, to the whole company.
No, they're called, I mean, they're actually just here, so see what happens.
No problem.
Yeah. I checked the board, it's up, I think it looks like it has the power. Uh, maybe it's just one of the switches in the, yeah, I might go with.
Go ahead.
Probably have to check that.
Okay, got it. Thanks, uh. Okay. Chief?
Good evening, everyone. So for the month of May, we've done 24 fire runs, nine EMS ones. Bring us to, uh, 77 fire runs and 62 EMS ones for the year. You want me to bring the other two up here or do you want to do new business?
Um, no, you can talk about it.
So, uh, we got an updated mutually agreement from Mawa. I think I shared it with you.
Yeah.
It mainly just covers our equipment better. So the other than that, there's no other, no change to that really.
Okay.
And the second thing I wanted to bring up was the proposal for EMS billing. I'm not sure if everyone's for that. I think John shared it with, uh.
Oh, yeah, but we didn't actually.
Okay, yeah. Um, I mean, it's not initial cost to us, but you know, if you want to review it, reach out to me further. Um, I was looking to, for approval to go forward at some point with, uh.
Yeah, can you give us a little?
Yeah, so, uh.
Fair, right.
We're the, we're the last, well, wholly voluntary, I mean, um, for the time being, we're pretty well staffed. Um, but I want to use this to be able to, if we need a daytime probe, be able to date it, a daytime probe down the road. Um, our problem, our call volume is not large, you know, it's a small village. Um, but from speaking with the company, it sounds like we would have enough to cover a daytime probe if needed in the future. Obviously, after we build up a bank of funds. Um, so I'm just trying to get a little bit out of it and just work into it a little bit because he said it's probably a six month, six to eight month startup period.
Yeah.
So, you know, just with the, getting contracts with the insurance companies, Medicare and all that kind of stuff. Um, but there's no cost to the village directly. Um, it's soft billing, quote unquote, so it's only if you have insurance, Medicare, et cetera. Um, and that's pretty much it. It's pretty much a straightforward system. The billing company is pretty popular around them. I got it from South March Night List and they seem pretty happy with it. And there's no change to any of our equipment along lines billing or any of your software.
So who submits, like, all the information to the?
So when we submit a PCR, a patient pair of work, if whatever information the billing company needs automatically gets sent over to them.
Okay.
And then they handle everything from there. So they, you know, they have a certain rundown of how many notices they send and stuff like that. Um, but like I said, it's, it's strictly for insurance providers. It's not an out of pocket cost to, you know, a builder, non-resident, anyone, anyone along those lines of that.
Right, right. And they take a cut, I guess, of the?
Yeah, they, so this, this, I think other companies had a startup fee. So this was a, uh, non-startup fee company and I believe their, their cost of each run is eight or nine percent guaranteed.
Nine percent and $10 flat for it to make it.
Correct.
Which is compared specifically to the one we looked at.
There we go.
And doesn't involve the $15,000 setup.
Yeah, so that was a big plus that's why a lot of people see. They're pretty happy with them. Um, they cover New York, Connecticut, Massachusetts. I think they have awards of thousands, departments or any of those sports that they service.
What?
So they're pretty, you know, pretty well known company.
And just to be clear, if somebody is not insured, then?
Correct, if there's, if they can't, so they'll search privately for insurance. If they can't find insurance, they'll send a letter to the, uh, resident or non-resident, wherever their address is, asking if they have insurance. If they say no, then it just gets split to the wayside and it's documented. If they fill out the insurance form that they have insurance, then they take the initial procedure of asking their, going, going for the insurance company.
Yeah, so one of the things that was discussed in the proposal is that it's optional for us whether or not we were allowed to have them send unpaid invoices to collections at all. So we can just say, no, we don't want to send it to collections. They'll send a bill if it doesn't get paid after a certain period of time, it's a write-off.
For somebody who doesn't have?
Right.
Yeah, so they have, uh.
They have more short forms too, sometimes insurance records to pay the act, so.
Yeah, so if they, if it was to pay the act or, you know, whatever it is, and then they'll send, this is what we paid and this is where you're at. Um, and then they have a, uh, general form of what everyone else does, mainly in New York, we're a fire district. So it's fewer fire districts. The, the law, I'm not sure of my myself, but it's different than the annual score, what you can bill and how you bill. Um, but they, they serve as most of the amount, which is fire, uh, EMS out there. It's not separate annual scores.
Is that the company, is the Rock company using this?
Yeah, so, yeah, so I got it from South, South March Town, I believe it's the only one, I'm sure it's a billing company as well. Um, I know some, they just switched, South March Town switched last year and they're very happy with it.
Really?
So that's why I, uh.
Oh, wow.
And no startup fees, this day compared to like the last one we looked at.
Looking back.
I'm not familiar with that one, but I know that's a big, uh, save.
Well, then get the agenda item for the next meeting, for the July meeting, and then we can get that.
Starts rolling. Okay, thank you.
All right. And wait, so you need a vote on the, um, Mawa?
On Mawa, yeah, probably, yes, yeah.
Nice, for the mutual aid?
Yes.
Um, I'll make motion, we need exactly updated Mawa mutual aid agreement.
Roll the paper. All right. Right, have a look at it, take it. I think Charlie's out of town. Uh, that's it, okay. Item four, old business. Jennifer, do you have any more business?
Um, no, we haven't any old business.
Okay, anybody? Uh, you need that, okay, fine, new business?
Yes, our new business. Um, we said we have a tax bill in May and we are starting obviously collecting, yeah, two seconds. Um, we're using the new tax billing system, which is working out pretty well. Residents are able to go onto the village website, there's now a link to view their taxes. Because we paid last year's bills in the system, there's the two-year history now, last year, this year. Uh, next year, we, um, the residents will have the ability to pay and actually take the taxes online. Right now, I don't know if we're partying or set up yet, so, uh, we missed the vote, well, they missed the vote for us on that one. Um, but by next year, we'll have that in place, so residents could also do that as well. Um.
And is there an additional fee involved with that?
Yeah, I don't.
Credit card versus?
Yeah, so there's, there's going to be a fee for them to pay online. I don't know if it's going to be a flat fee or a percent. They don't have the necessary vendor setup yet, so I'm not really quite sure what it's going to be. But if Orange Town, would you pay it online? I'm gonna say $6.95.
I think it's $27.
Yeah, or, or it could be a $27.
Yeah, completely.
If it's a credit card, maybe it's percentage of the checking, maybe it's a fraction. I, I, I think, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Um, so we have that, um, we also got a check meter now for the vent, which is a pretty awesome thing, 20%. So now we are going to sit there and tediously find out a million positive things for all the tax collection. Now we can just read it right through the machine, which will lock quicker and a lot less people work for us to have laying around. So, so that, um, and now we just also have to get the residents used to going online. And all the expert companies and all the people doing CBOs to start using the village website to go with the taxes. So that, that was helpful. Um. This, uh, Monday coming up, for our associates will be in onsite to start our financial wallets. I have already done the fluid preliminary paperwork ready for them for the FDR, the county bill, payroll, all of that is ready to go. They've already come in, I believe, to go get copy of their book, so we are rolling, we'll see ahead. And she should be in on Monday. Um, we also got a letter from the state office office. Um, our waterers will be back this week to do procurement and that was the last piece. And then the letter that, that we received, and I think the board received, is that they will be pretty pointed, they're going to contact us for conferences. And at that conference, they'll identify what areas they're going to audit. Um, and said, you know, what they say, you know, the areas, maybe, um, end up identifying that. So here's that. Um, and that's all that I have. That's it.
Okay. Any others, nothing else there? Look at this, that's everything?
Yeah, I think that's all.
Okay, anybody else?
You can be, uh, request to separate page or what's up with the transportation committee? Is that something?
Oh, yes, yeah. Um.
Paul.
Paul's here. So Paul, you want to go on up and, uh, make the request?
Yeah, I, uh, Paul Keyes representing Transportation Committee. So as you know for well, transportation issues are, um, frequently brought up here. They're frequently talked about and dealt with, uh, throughout the community. And the Transportation Committee has been the clearinghouse for those so that we can make recommendations to the board. The reality is that the awareness of the committee is still relatively low. The attendance at our meeting is relatively low. Uh, there's a core group of people who are kind of doing all the work. Um, and as a first step, to get more publicity than just social media, which is how we've been posting the meeting notices and more recently, the agendas and minutes. Having a place on the website would be a good start. It's a step along the way to the recommendation in the comprehensive plan to make the committee in the code, an official committee. Where we could appoint members who would create some continuity, we would, um, have some credibility. Right now, when we express a point of view, it's really kind of the feeling of the people who show up for the meeting and, and that's not really good enough. So, um, that's, that's a future agenda for the board. But, but as a first step, having access to putting the materials on the website would be really helpful.
So that would be meeting notices, minutes?
Meeting notices, minutes, any supporting material. Um, and, uh, when we want to communicate, to be able to use the same means that the village uses to communicate. So we may want to push out a notice about a meeting.
Yeah.
Not just post it and expect people to come and find it, that kind of story.
I don't see any problem with it, right?
Nothing too weird, I'd be happy to help in any way I can. I think all we need to do is ask it to set Paul up with the audience and head pressure to edit the page and create a new tree in the menu tool.
Yeah. All right, I'll make a motion to, uh, get the transportation committee out of the website.
I'll say, yeah.
Roll the paper?
Aye.
Okay. Item six, public comment, uh, not waiting for. Chief, do you want to, sorry, I hate that, I thought you would call that. I should bring these, yeah, while you're coming up. Thank you.
Good evening, major board. Uh, for the month of May, we had 295 summonses were issued, responded to 444 calls for service. Ninety-six were in brand new, there remain 349 here in parallel. And the only thing I have is we did participate in the New York City COVID or ticket campaign for the last two weeks. Uh, four traffic posts were completed and those four were supported for some reason issued for seat belts. Uh, so we're doing another speech at probably in the month of August, and I want you guys to know what those dates are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I've seen across the article recently, uh, from Grinch, who just had been a gas powered food delivery van. And in the first week of the day, received 71 calls for service. Just, uh, I'll put that out there.
How many summonses were issued on that?
It was.
Seventy-one in the first week. All right, all right, that's for another day. Uh. Public comment. We have Nina. And again, this is for not agenda items.
Evening, mayor and board. Um, I requested in February, the February meeting, um, new signage we put up in Piramore Park for, uh, no dogs and that it be enforced. Um, there's a lot of training, there's a lot of catch from North Way, there are people that set up tents and stay all day when you can with dogs. Um, and then there's a lot left behind, uh, from the dogs, so extra weight is left throughout the park as well. And, um, there are also vulnerable people that the dogs want to. So I'm just asking that people could put even new signage, I know a new sign went up two years ago or something.
Do we have signage on the, in front of the park then?
It says on the front of the park sign.
But the, the font is about this big. And then you've also got, um, a message on there that says that the gate closes at dusk. So people may not think that that's actually a sign that means anything.
That's around the park.
Say that again?
Yeah, around the park, it's like the park closes the car.
Yeah, there used to be a fence in front, or a little, yeah, big fence. So, uh, maybe it's, it's just a communication. And another request I had, that is if the sitting attorney can have an ink plate. Because Lena's name is here and I'm not familiar with all of the attorneys, so it would be really nice to just know who's sitting in each of the meetings. Thanks.
The record, my name is Michael Starbaji, I'm, uh, with, uh, Blake and Clyde Schmidt, uh, same firm that, uh, represents the village.
Thank you. All right, item seven. Resolution to ask the committee to intervene in the municipal agreement with Rockland County Intelligence Center and Regional Investigative Resource Center. Chief, you want to describe what, uh, this is going back?
So this agreement, the, uh, every department or wholesale department, Rockland, the science officers, to these different units that the county has, um, intelligence unit, our content unit and such. Uh, we do our officer does assist, so this agreement is going to reimburse the village up to $200,000 a year for any cost that occurs for that officer salary. Um, so every municipality is being offered this, um, and we'll see if next year it goes up or down. But it's the first time we've done it, so we will reimburse it anytime an officer is outside assisting in other regions.
Does it mean any downside?
No downside.
All right. I make a, uh, motion to adopt the resolution entering into this intermediate of arena. All in favor?
Aye.
Item A, review request from General Downtown at 456 Piermont Avenue to leave the 30. Thirty days advance notice to the municipality for their license. I believe this is pretty much just a, um, uh, we usually just, uh, grant it, just so they get the license sooner than waiting for 30. Correct?
Yeah. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, request from Trattoria de Vitorio to have a delivery-only space with a 15-minute timer for deliveries in front of 453 Piermont Avenue. Uh, if you can say your name and.
Could maybe you can do a list for the ads. Trattoria, De Vitorio. And throughout the simple presentation, as you know, previously, we eliminated the two-hour parking space, or the car parking space from that establishment. Finally.
It was a 15-minute space.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, it was a 15-minute space, I'm sorry, I'm saying correctly.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, what we found is that all deliveries now are going onto Gash Street. And, uh, it's resulting in a very long trip of these, these delivery men to go up and down those stairs through the establishment. Uh, sometimes it is six times, very exhausting. It's dangerous because they're walking in the street toward the establishment and the trucks parked on, on Gash is, you know, a lot of block chatter, certainly reduces the site distance. And so what we're looking for is a 15-minute space directly in front of deliveries only. And, uh, obviously those are done during the day, usually in the morning, you know, they're in and they're out. And so reduces the time it takes to make the deliveries, uh, reduces their, uh, they have to travel to get to the establishment and they can be often a little bit difficult. So, um, problem we're having is that, uh, you know, they know parking space, uh, there was some enforcement going on and the vendors are starting to threaten them to deliver, which is basically a risk. So if they can get in and out quickly, it's, uh, I think much easier for everybody that closes to the establishment, the trucks won't block Gash Street. And, uh, I think it's overall a better solution.
So you're requesting a delivery?
Delivery only, 15-minute limit.
We're right now at a no parking zone.
Right, correct. And, you know, I think you're all familiar with the layout, it moves those trucks right next to the establishment, so it's really won't block the street. Uh, I mean, very little blocking of, uh, Piermont Avenue.
Okay. Um, all right, yeah. Paul, uh, I think you said that he, do you want me to read what you said or would you prefer to?
Either way.
What are you doing? So we had, we, we did get a response from the head of the Traffic Transportation Committee and, uh, I'll read, that's fine. Uh. The Piermont transportation committee and Chief Hurley have monitored the parking space in front of 453 Piermont Avenue for many months. The previous recommendation from Trattoria to change the space to a 15-minute, two-hour spot led to detailed evaluation of the actual dimensions of the location. Our conclusion that was that any parking, not only any parking in that location was disruptive to traffic flow in an already difficult intersection. Forcing northbound traffic into opposing lanes in that particular spot is dangerous. Allowing truck parking in that spot for deliveries would exacerbate the problem and would be unsafe. The Transportation Committee does not agree with Trattoria's recommendation. Short-term delivery parking is a problem throughout the downtown area. The Transportation Committee will continue to improve this on its agenda to consider possible solutions. I think the, um, the problem is that any truck that parks there forces the cars coming north on Piermont Avenue into the southbound lane.
My, my attention to me is that this place has been, uh, established with service crews for many years, decades. Trucks have been going there all the time, all of a sudden, this is a problem. I mean, this has been going on for years and years. It seems to me, uh, and I don't understand why blocking Gash Street is any less dangerous than a slight, you know, protrusion into, uh, Piermont Avenue, which would happen, which would be very short. That these trucks on Gash Street have to sit there for a half hour sometimes because the vendors have to travel with heavy hand trucks. And, you know, through the street and down the stairs. I don't understand how it's any less dangerous, uh, you know, to, uh, pause that time to do this.
I'd like to, um, I mean, it's, there is a possible solution, but first of all, could the delivery be done in like vans as opposed to like those big tractor trailer things? Like large box trucks? Second, second, could they also be done before noon?
First of all, they, the delivery, what they deliver, and I don't think it's with trucks. They usually, they're usually refrigerator trucks, that's the problem. Um, I also note, and I, 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 I provided photos of a Cisco truck, like 55-foot Cisco truck parked on top of a no parking decal. And it's at different hour. I, you know, I don't understand how, you know, I was people have to go around this thing. Um, it's very, it's, it's wired from the vehicle and, you know, with that kind of situation going on, it seems like the, um, intrusion into Piermont Avenue by my client, my client's vendors. It's far less than what the Cisco trucks are doing when they're sitting on a no parking, uh, decal.
We read that, I thought.
Right, right, right in front of, uh, well, I, I have looked because, uh, it's a pretty little different color, but anyway. It's usually right in front of, or just south of, uh, Saddle Beach Drive. I looked at it. I did, I don't know my phone actually, and sat there for now, it's a tron. It's definitely full hour, or I take, took the picture and left. So what is the village doing on that?
You mean parked right in front of village hall, but?
Basically, yes, basically, yes, right across the station.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think there's something else worth considering here, which is that you're describing part of the delivery task as involving bringing things down stairs. And to my mind, that's a new thing. Previous establishments there didn't use downstairs storage, to my knowledge, they had a kitchen in the back on the first floor. So the stairs there directly north of the building, you're having the deliveries be brought from there?
I don't think that's a major component of what I'm addressing. We're wanting trucks on Gash Street, so we're hoping to, you know, half hour, maybe more, while these people have to travel with a hand truck over Piermont Avenue downstairs. The downstairs part, you know, it might as well just be in the, in the restaurant itself. But the point is to have these people pushing hand truck, uh, to Piermont Avenue. I don't see how that's any less dangerous than where, uh, then, then parking directly in front of getting out of there sooner.
My only point was just that someone who's still on a trucking company, I, I think your venue may be objecting to having to bring things down a couple of flights of stairs more than a few feet across the block.
No, because they have to go downstairs and that's a lot. They're not, I'm telling you about that, I don't think, for those of you that are playing, they're playing out the fact that they're giving tickets, that's the plan. They're playing about as whole ones being used, obviously the park is trying to move your car or get a ticket or truck and they have to go to Gash Street. And now pushing a hundred yards to my client's establishment, sometimes these trucks will load up with 60, 80 pounds of perishable.
Yes, Paul.
So, um, I think we're sympathetic to these issues for all the restaurants in Piermont, for sure. I think that needs to be said. Um, there are violators and the chief, if the chief is still here, he can speak to it, of the sort that you're pointing out. I think it's, it's not, um, it's not an argument of, you know, other people are breaking the law, so you can create, um, a disruption. And parking around the corner is what Rhymes does to get deliveries to them. And it is less of a disruption to the major traffic flow through the main part of that downtown area. It's not a good situation, but I don't know any other thing other than a very limited time restriction for deliveries in that spot that would be the beginning of the day or something that is less prone to disrupt the traffic. I don't know if you can control the vendors that way.
It's also do that, because those are the stops that they make, so it's also really limited. Uh, we're looking for fifteen minutes, we're gonna have ten, we do that, uh, you know, like I said, we're looking for the quickest solution as possible, we want the immediate and fastest as possible. We don't want to cause any disruption, but we are to be safe about it too. I mean, uh, like I said, and also a scientific attachment where we do, we didn't do that, we got, I, I think that's really what it's about, but, I mean, we've got a fifty-five foot truck parked on top of a no parking decal. That, that, that's the message to me, that it seems to be a bit of a disconnect here.
You know, we get double parking for deliveries all the time.
You do?
It's not good, it's not good. So it's not that there isn't a big problem, um, but the trucks in that location continuously cause a problem for that intersection and, uh, that's what we've been reacting to.
Cars and trucks are parked in there for years and years.
No, it was never that way, it was always supposed to be for quick takeout and never trucks, never trucks.
Well, I don't have those options out there, but, uh, the point is, this is a, this is an establishment which has a larger clientele and, you know, needs a lot of, of perishable product, even not perishable, doesn't look mad, it's, it's, it's a very long distance establishment, that's a, you know, get this kind of consideration. And trying to gather, I don't know why a truck sitting on Gare Street for forty-five minutes is better than when that's sitting in front of my client's establishment for fifteen.
I'm not saying that either, I'm not sure why it's forty-five minutes to do what otherwise would be fifteen minutes or sixteen.
They have to go back and forth six times, that's why, they can't, only so much product on, on the hand truck, it's up and down constantly. This is where they go down, the module, you know, it's just, it's quicker, I mean, it goes outside. It's a, it's a, it's a, I, I didn't bother measuring, it's a, it's at least sixty-seven yards. It's a long way to let the impact.
I don't know if Chief has any comments on, you know, what we've seen, what we've looked at, but this is, this is where we came out.
It, uh, it, it seems, you know, and aside, you know, if you have cars turning up in there, they can't see beyond the truck and this, this point doesn't seem to have any concern about that.
I don't know.
You have, you don't sight distance, instead, how far do we go then Gare Street? How many yards? They park, it's close to it to get to the establishment, make the turn and then have a parking answer, that's it?
That's not a great solution either.
No, it's not, I think the better one, have my, uh, chief in and out so it's possible. And, and, uh, I think it's more something that seems to be, you know, no recognition that they have. That, I think it needs to be given out a bit quicker. And most of the, instead, we'll be there as long as possible, in the most dangerous situation we can imagine.
That's the point, that's not the most dangerous.
Well, you know, we can, we can, it's a part, sort of, it's, it's mostly, but it's not necessarily the same. Understood. It seems to be a, a real resistance here, I just can't back up.
I have a quick question. Do you have any, you probably don't have this up, the topic you have, but it's, are there, um, certain days where there, there's a schedule of deliveries, like Mondays, they get this?
Heavy days Friday, heavy days include the Friday. Because that's when the weekend, uh, you know, stock has to come in.
Right.
You know, everything's fresh, so you want to have it there on Friday. And I think there's usually a Saturday morning that we, that's some fear.
I think it would be helpful, maybe, um, to come to some, to be able to discuss it further if we knew, if we had a, uh, some sort of schedule.
That'd be helpful, we, we can, uh, look at the days.
Or something, but if we knew that, you know, there's going to be a thirty foot truck on Mondays or there's going to be, you know, a van pulling up on Wednesday.
They need box trucks, they're not, they're not a fifty-five foot Cisco. These are usually, uh, with the small, um, vendors, um, specialty items, so they're, they're smaller trucks, they're usually, I don't know, twenty feet, not fifty-five.
So I, okay.
Just one of the concerns, I don't know if you're aware, uh, of the, uh, there's a commuter bus line, there are roads from Parala.
Einstein, is there?
And, and Parala is actually where the north and south avenue buses cross. So it's not uncommon in the morning on an hourly basis or almost to be northbound at that location at the same time the buses southbound. And if there's even a car parked there, they can't cross each other. The same applies to emergency vehicles, if there's a truck out there.
Well, do you have the same concern with Cisco trucks sitting there and, you know, uh, basically it's wide of those vehicles? In fact, I saw somebody, uh, some UBS truck sitting there, he's parked in front of a...
I mean, I'm just not really interested in talking about Cisco truck, you're here to talk about.
I am, I am, but you're addressing our, I'm, you know, I guess we're getting treated in, in different batches than the other vendors, who we got allowed to have their, uh, deliveries to them, and my client has this imposition of having to have his vendors, uh, you know, parked further from his, uh, establishment than the people like, they just be committed.
I understand that, I understand that there are other businesses in town that also have deliveries that need to translate similar amount of business, maybe not as many stairs, but the same kind of feet on the street. And that's one of the, you know, that's one of the things about the way Parala's layout there, limited places for commercial parking.
Well, it might be, but it seems like, uh, the space in front of the client's establishment.
One last one that, are we sure that before your client had it, that they were making deliveries in front? Like what makes you think that?
Why would they not?
The previous restaurant.
Because it's unsafe.
Because, right.
It, it, it seems minimal to me that, that they would have not, that a, a truck wouldn't use common sense to stop right in front of that, use that space and just, you know, go there.
Well, I don't know, only because you made the statement, it's always been like that.
Well, it's always been a restaurant, it's been a restaurant for a long time.
I know it's been a restaurant, but I'm not sure that it's always been a delivery as well.
Well, certainly some trucks will stop there, because, uh, I mean, you know.
Speculations, huh?
Yeah, well, you know, what's not speculation is that, like, you know, well, I'm telling you, you've got the layout right now.
Right, no, I, you get the, you get it.
So I have a suggestion, um, I don't know if it would work, but, um, maybe working with another business owner, um, which is Rhymes next door. So I've seen their deliveries not only on Gare Street, but I sent you pictures of a Cisco truck delivering to them across all their spots, so maybe there's something, they don't open until one, I think.
I think they open early.
Earlier?
Yeah, but, well, watch out around.
Possibly utilize.
That could be a bit difficult.
It's closer.
Uh, yeah, that's, you know, by the way, it wasn't actually me, the Rhymes has their trucks, uh, I guess going to Gare Street, in fact, because they're much closer, they're, you know, maybe fifty feet away, or about, or, or quite a bit further. Yeah, I, uh, I, I would welcome the opt two, so get some more officials to the board, maybe come up with some structure solution.
Well, you can consider any way you could have your deliveries made with the truck parked on, say, Keta Avenue?
That's the one that's a little closer, right? Right next to where, 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 where. Just be bringing the stuff down. Yeah, it, it seems to be narrow, it's, it's all cars coming out of there.
Well, it's, it would definitely block it, but it's, it's a lot closer, if you say it can be in, in and out in fifteen minutes, uh, it won't be a problem.
And that is, so, I mean, let's go, take, they have their call, goes downhill, if these are one uphill with these, with these hand trucks, then over to my client's establishment.
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a two-way street, I mean.
Two ways, but, uh.
It's getting by Piermont Avenue fairly level of work, so I don't, uh, maybe some, maybe...
The hand trucks not bothering you going uphill. The thing is, if you're in the areas level, uh, in any slot situation where you're, you know, mine spot with traffic, it's still, it's still going to be blocking Piermont, so I don't know if that's a, that's a workable solution. We have people with, like I said, with hand truck going.
Well, you're not blocking Piermont Avenue, you'd be blocking Keta Avenue.
But we'd definitely be blocking Keta Avenue, which might be.
You don't get this.
It's a way to park the truck.
What do you think of that idea? I mean, if it's for fifteen minutes, uh, uh, yes, Paul?
Well, I'm just curious about why they park next to Rhymes Park, um, as you head down to Massillon Church or you're walking inside. Where, where there's no parking, um, could that?
You mean Kennedy Park?
Yeah.
Crossing the curb?
Could there be fifteen minute?
I would, that's, that's a further than.
Yeah, I think there is a parking zone there, but.
But there's also a non-parking zone and maybe make a spot for deliveries only for ten minutes.
That seems, uh.
That's closer.
I got to measure it.
And it's a wide street.
You know what she's talking about, Paul?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's actually more steps, but it's, it's not disrupting.
What steps in Gare?
I, 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 that's different, that is a tough curve over there and, uh, you know, cars can go very close and, you know, they have to, get over the curve, you know, and, uh, you know, and they have buses, I would say, uh, I'm, I'm.
I recommend this, you come back, you know, and let us know what days, how many deliveries and size of vehicles, right?
Yeah, I mean, my concern, I think it's a great idea, the only problem is that just being from the logistics world, the truck's going to get there, the truck's going to get there, and you're not going to turn away, you can use the product, it's in the back of the truck and it's spoilt, so if we say it was okay between these hours, we would end up then giving tickets to trucks to show up outside of those hours.
Yeah, but then there, we, we have no idea what we're dealing with right now. We're talking in kind of abstract, but in real, real terms. We're talking about a spot that was a fifteen minute, hey, I'm running in to pick up my food spot to now big trucks coming in and blocking access roads, blocking buses, blocking all kinds of things. So what I'm trying to do, because it sounds like you're feeling frustrated, like you're just hearing no and other, other people are getting to do what they want, I'm trying to just come up with some kind of way to move forward so that we know exactly what we're dealing with, because I don't know if we're talking about ten deliveries a week, you know, with perishable goods.
I would think there was something there, but I'll find out.
But again, we're all, we're talking hypothetical, so if we knew that, you know, Mondays are quieter in Piermont, you say get most of your stuff on Friday, if we knew, if we had some kind of schedule, we would at least have something to work with, but we can't just blanketly say, yes, you can park here to have your client deliver their goods to make it easier on the delivery people and these are, it's a safety concern. It's a safety concern for the buses, it's a safety concern for ambulances, police, there's a lot of issues. So we're, we're going from talking about a fifteen minute delivery, I'm running in to get my food spot to now a truck spot, and that's very different. So I'm just trying to offer a solution in that if we know what we're dealing with, maybe the Transportation Committee and the board can then discuss it and help come up with a resolution. But we're not just going to sit here, or I'm not just going to sit here and say, yes, it's not that we're not sympathetic to your situation, it's just, we don't, we don't have, there's no good solution right now, and we want to help you come up with one if we can.
That's fair, that's fair enough, I would point that out, I think the entire village has a safety issue with comes these deliveries, it's not, it's.
Looking for the mic, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yes. I think the entire village has a problem with safety with comes these deliveries, not just my client, we have very large trucks, as I pointed out, looking to sidewalk and the community, I'm not sure where they exactly are delivering, but managing to stay there. And, uh, you know, this is not a, a problem that's solely, you know, posed by my client, because other, other establishments too, and it seems to be, uh, it seems to be no problem with that and, uh, you know, we're, we're sort of confined to what we have to work with, which is, you know, the, uh, that space in front of Gare Street and, you know, Gare, this isn't working out for us because of what's going on in safety and, uh, the fact that vendors are just trying to dislike doing that, plus I think it's a safety issue anyway, more so than on, on Piermont, because you have a wide spot and live in sight distance around the truck.
I understand, I, I've given a suggestion, you can take that suggestion?
Oh, no, I think.
Or, I can come back or?
We can do that. We're happy to come back and give you some information on whether the delivery's made, the size of the deliveries, um, size of the truck and, you know, what, uh, what hours they usually happen.
Okay, that would be a helpful start and then we can go.
Okay, um, so let's take it and see what, uh.
Okay, we'll do the next page.
Uh, uh, next to you?
Well, whatever, you have your information.
You can get us that information as soon as possible.
The next meeting is July fifteenth.
July fifteenth, yeah.
Okay, I'll see what you have by hand, should be, uh, a spreadsheet of deliveries and what I need.
Yeah, I can just get it to the clerk.
I think the best way to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, thank you, Ray.
Thank you very much. Okay, item ten, request from Tratta on the River Restaurant to hire a fireworks company to station a barge in the Hudson River for a fireworks display on July fourth, twenty twenty-five. Tim, you want to come up and, uh, just give us a little, uh, overview of what you're planning? Or give a question request?
So, being that, uh, we're a beautiful time, next year we're going to have our anniversary, right, two hundred and fifty years, supposedly, right? So I, I would suggest that we don't have any, uh, firework show in this town for a long time and, uh, I'm willing to donate the firework and, uh, I had a meeting with the Tampa Naya to do, to hire the same company that they do it and to do it at the same time with the same barge, you know, they're two, same barge company.
Right.
And, um, and to do it not in front of my property, somewhere in front of my property where the wall is, six hundred feet into the water where everybody can see it from the park and the pier, wherever you are in Piermont. With that said, uh, there was some concern that, uh, with the fire, uh, department in reference to getting, uh, clearance from the Coast Guard, we reached out to the Coast Guard today, uh, they, uh, said that they didn't know if they had jurisdiction on that or not, that they thought it was more of a town thing, they're going to look into it and respond to us, we did, they don't deal with Naya and it's in the same waterway, so we'll get the response from them here or there, but if that to go, it just because it's fourth of July, you have to commit with the company, uh, it's not a cheap investment, it's a thirty thousand dollar investment, so.
So you're saying Naya didn't need?
Naya didn't, no, they didn't get it from the Coast Guard, so I don't know if they needed it or not, but Naya, uh, helped, uh, is doing it anyway for the last two or three years, I think. So they will do it at the same time, the whole show will happen at the same time, I think it's nine thirty, the show's twenty, twenty-five minutes and, and I guess the social physical act, like you light up the fireworks in the barge, now it's all computer ready, it's like one guy in the barge and one fire guy standing by, and then we'll do it synchronized the show so we can see it from both sides of the bridge at the same time. I don't know, it's food for thought. For me, it's here or there, I would love to have it, to do it, and so to, uh, tag it.
Keith, you okay with it?
Well, I have some extra man now, I'm going to let that out to see if there's any traction. Yes, I'm just going to see if there's any, there's always equipment, it's all just on the side.
Okay, thanks. I suppose it happens, the, uh, Pierre Rock would, like that guy, but I think they'd do that anyway.
We use the F with the fireworks around, that's going to be the only thing.
Right, right. Uh, any questions or, uh, concerns?
I, I love the idea of that, far, it's the fourth of July, just don't see anybody getting in trouble for not having a proper period where, so I, I, um, we're, the interesting period with the Coast Guard ends up deciding about whether or not they do need to issue a permit, it's going back there, it takes a substantial amount of time to get that.
Um, I'm late, uh, the office responded to us within like twenty minutes and they were going to come back to us, uh, to, to get the, uh, approval. On top of that, uh, the fire, the, the fire, um, the fireworks show company issued us, I think, I, I gave the copy, it shows an insured certificate. At first it came back at two million per incident, which my insurance company at my restaurants, that was too low, we went back, they gave us five million per occurrence if anybody, anything happens. They gave us five million per occurrence, if anybody, anything happens, plus, uh, five million for, um, I forgot what it's called, something else, uh, per occurrence. So I'm going to be, so we did get it correctly. So they gave us five million, um, dollars, uh, per occurrence insurance coverage, which offers the most secure and extensive coverage available in this industry. And this five million dollars hazmat liability coverage required by U.S. Department of Transportation. So, per occurrence. So we have that. I think they gave us a certificate. Uh, I think we should, uh, if, if it does, if it's a go, the village should be on the certificate also. Uh, which they have no problem with. Right now, it's only my company's name, uh.
And they're going to need that.
And the village, uh, will get that done. That's not a problem. And, uh, that's it. You know, we'll get the Coast Guard to say, yeah, or no. Uh, they thought that, uh, they said that, uh, uh, the response was, if I can check my phone.
Sure.
I just go, I don't want to, on the email. Response, my eyesight is going at fifty years old, so. I've attached, uh, I, I told them I've attached, I mean, the company, the energy of the proposed plan on the Google map and on the side of the barge. And as Naiac, we, we will be using the same company. Uh, we do have, and they responded, we don't have full information, uh, at this time, if we are in jurisdiction on that site. We do know other fireworks that happened on the Hudson in Rockland and on the, uh, on Towne Towne that we, we previously were asked for approval and will never answer, you know what I mean, the Coast Guard said. So we will have an answer within twenty-four hours, they said. Uh, keep us informed. We, we will keep us informed. Also, we have been aware that the Coast Guard no longer has the, this is what the fireworks show, has the online request submission system that we've used in the past. Can you please forward any instructions, you know, uh, I guess, to, uh, they responded, so we'll, we'll see. You know, obviously, we want to get all these certificates possible. So anyway, we, okay. One is the fire, we have to identify if we're going to do it with the town, uh, wants, uh, to be identified, because it was the village of Piermont, uh, if we do. And that won't get, uh.
Also, do, do we not send the fire department to Naiac for, uh, will we do the same thing here?
We do typically send a department to Naiac to support the sheriff's community. We could keep, I mean, that heater, we would walk it.
Right, well, that's kind of asking.
But I believe the capabilities of doing both, or requesting both, is what I'm, I can recover there. Is that right?
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah, there's a, there's a.
Um, so, and nobody's spoken to, as we just heard from Chief Philip, and nobody's spoken to anybody to come fire department. Regarding.
I did, because they told me, uh, I don't know about the people they want to know, if Coast Guard had, had that clearance or not, that was the only responsibility.
But that would be, so I'm assuming, and then from there, if we're split, we have to split our fire department between being Naiac and being Peter. We, we have to make sure that we have the man power.
I, I think we can give it here, the man power, for it. I think what makes the most sense for us to do is to, uh, do an approval that's contingent on getting all the other required approvals.
Okay.
That way, if that pops up, whether it's the Coast Guard or another agency, uh, we're, we're covered, that everybody's got all the paperwork.
So.
Myra, you want to say something? You're good.
I'm good.
Are you good? All right, so.
When being, if I got a residence, when being, uh, forced to.
Everybody, every agency that has some sort of approval, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's why, we do it with contingence, and, and yet, the, the fire attend, they probably just lost the building two months ago, six months ago.
Yeah.
So I'm sure it would be very interesting.
Uh, the fire company, um, we probably have to talk about the end of the week, that's the goal, too. The, the barge is secured. So the barge company's at Naiac, everybody, you know, they're donating the barge to, for the, for Piermont to have it. So we got them to donate the barge. I think for Naiac, so it's, it's a great thing. And, you know, honestly, the force, I, I will pick up. And if, if it works that way, I would like to do it anywhere, you know, for the town, for its partner. But, uh, the barge company is fine. Yes or no, you know, if they're donating the barge, but, uh, so. So I guess we have to talk to the fire department, uh, I don't know, we, we, we haven't got people for that day.
Well, it sounds like number one, you need to hear back from, from the Coast Guard.
From the Coast Guard. And, right, and once they say, yeah, they're going to their jurisdiction, that we have to coordinate, I would imagine, with our fire department, make sure we're covered.
Um, since we do send people to Naiac for their fireworks, so that we can lose enough manpower. So do you want to?
Well, so, I mean, we do members, our chief, we're, we're definitely members.
I mean, usually we send the vote to Naiac, continue with Naiac Fire Department and the Sheriff's Office. I don't know if the Sheriff's Office has any SOP on that, on order fireworks. Um, and I have to refer to Danny. I know we talked about being able to, the Coast Guard Department, but beyond that, I'm not sure that's marked as, uh, wrong expertise.
So, so we wait for the word from the Coast Guard of the VA or MA, and then I guess.
Like Tom, Ted, or, uh, Mr. Jericho?
Yeah, right.
Maybe we do this by the middle, or do we have that agreement? Do we need to do something right now, or do they?
All right.
I mean, you're getting the thing, assuming that the Coast Guard doesn't have an issue with it, um, and the fire department's okay with it, you can vote now. You know, based on, well, obviously, the object confirmation.
And, and insurance.
Well, I think she had the answer.
Well, if we're laying everything out, we should.
Safe to.
Light her.
Okay. And the insurance, yes. Right. So, yeah, uh, so I'll make a motion to approve based on those Coast Guard, fire department, insurance, everything in line, get, you know, obviously, get back this as quickly as possible, and assuming all those agencies and insurance get, like, Jennifer, and go find, uh, I, I make a motion to approve.
I'm just suggesting the board might want to reserve the right to, uh, you know, to, uh, condition, for the condition approval on any, any other agencies that may be identified, any of the relevant agencies that may identify, you know, uh, in the next, uh, years.
Yeah. And this.
And then, and then the relevant agents. All in favor? All right, but, yeah, just get back this, I don't know. All right, we'll go find, uh, thank you. Okay, item eleven, request on Piermont Community Garden for the annual summer solstice picnic in Piranha Park on Saturday, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, six to ten P.M., with a rain date of Sunday, June twenty-second. Any questions on this one? Do it every year, right?
Yeah.
All right, I make a motion to approve their request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, then we have a series of bond resolutions. Item twelve, eighty-five thousand, five hundred and ten dollar bond resolution for fire department equipment. Somebody want to make a motion to approve?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item thirteen, sixty-five thousand dollar bond resolution for police facilities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen, uh, fifty-nine thousand, hundred and forty dollar bond resolution for Village Hall and Community Center.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, item fifteen, eight thousand dollar bond resolution for Village Sidewalk by Half Moon Park.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen, thirty-five thousand dollar bond resolution for improvements to the village parking lots.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this, I think, is a slight change?
No, this one is out.
Oh, okay. So that's, the other is a different. Okay. Item seventeen, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollar bond resolution for D P W equipment tractor.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
He's one of the big ones.
Yeah.
The last resolution that's making the agenda, because initially, when bond had consented, it was the police facilities, but I mentioned, you were the leaders, only now it's closed to the board. Tommy called me late this afternoon to tell me, uh, he had estimated six thousand dollars to dig the trench for the water meter at Half Moon Park. Uh, it turns out the plumber came up with an estimate now of twenty-five thousand dollars. So the resolution that didn't make the agenda is sort of not valid any longer anyhow, because the board has to make a decision to either bond now for twenty-five thousand dollars toward the plants at Half Moon Park, or taking six thousand dollars off the resolution and just be left, two items seven, be left on this, would be the parking signage at thirty-five hundred dollars and the drain rates at thirty-one sixty-five. So if the board decides not to go with digging a pit for a new water meter and removing completely, then the capital would go down. If you decide to approve the twenty-five thousand dollars, the bond resolution, uh, will go up to thirty-one thousand, six sixty-five, and the total capital will be six hundred and six thousand, three hundred dollars.
Tommy, when those, when they need water, and you can drop your water container there.
So that's what, that's what's happening now. We have our water tank there.
Yeah.
I think it's, uh, the price is crazy.
Yes.
I think we should just continue what we're doing.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then, what is after approved or decided, get a rate?
So, yeah, so bond has to, um, if they take the six thousand dollars off, the, the resolution that the board would agree to tonight is for six thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars, which is for the parking signage at thirty-five hundred dollars and the drain rates at three thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. So this bond resolution for D P W project would be a total of six thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Everybody want to?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that was seventeen page. Okay. Item eighteen, is there anything?
I'm gonna get it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming today.